Committee of the whole is back in order. Colleagues, before we begin, when we broke last night, we were presented with a document, and then we recessed to allow us to review it. I had OFB analyze it and distill it. We sent it out over email this morning after I was able to review it. I've also provided you a copy, just in case you didn't open your emails. So you have it on paper, and you have it in your emails. We can, OFB is here this morning to discuss it if you want, or we can just continue discussion on 245. I am willing to relinquish the chair to go back to make some amendments, if that's the desire of the body, and I... Senator Uggins.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I would like to request that OFB Executive Director be able to expound on the presentation that was provided to us just this morning. I think it's good for the people of Guam to be able to understand what the comparative analysis is between the existing law, budget law for fiscal year 18, and what the proposal presents. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
With that request, Mr. Hernandez will walk us through his analysis. There is some text in the beginning, and then a whole bunch of charts, I mean, at the last 15 pages, so.
Hafed, good morning, Senators. The report in front of you is entitled "The Fiscal Realignment Plan for FY 2018 as Submitted by Imaga Lhangoohan: Summary Review and Analysis." So OFB took a look at the bill as proposed. We refer to it in the report as the FRP Bill, Fiscal Realignment Plan Bill. And what we did was we just took the data from the original Public Law 34-42, which is the General Appropriations Act of 2018, and compared the amendments that were made to it in the FRP Bill. And in general, the report is organized into three sections. The first one is just the introduction and overview, which discusses what the FRP is, the requirement of it, and what was submitted, and the date. In that introduction, it includes the identification of the difference between the reduction in general fund revenues in the FRP Bill, and then, as compared to the reduction in the general fund appropriations. And we noted that there was a difference of 17.89 million in the negative. I just wanted to read a little bit of the caveats about the report, just so that we can have a basis for our assumptions. The data reviewed and analyzed by the summary review and analysis were taken directly from Public Law 34-42 and the FRP Bill. OFB notes that this summary review and analysis does not include an analysis of the impacts of the reductions to general fund appropriations specifically authorized for federal matching grants. And the report makes no recommendation on fiscal policy, and it's intended to assist the Senators of the 34th Guam Legislature in their review of the FRP Bill. If you turn to page three, and this is where it just provides an entire summary of the report on Table 1, it'll reflect the change in the revenues, which is 65.71 million downward. And then it shows an appropriations overview illustrated by, and organized by, executive branch agencies, education agencies, other branches, departments and agencies, retiree-related appropriations, and then your debt service. So you'll notice that the total reduction in the appropriations portion of the bill is 47.82 million, which shows a total budgetary shortfall based on the FRP Bill of 17.89 million dollars. As for Sections 2 and 3, that just gives you the details of Table 1. So if you do have any questions regarding those, it just presents, yes, Chair.
Senator Frank Uggins, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, and thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Just a quick question in regards to looking at the graph or the chart that you provided on Page 3. It highlights on the revenues overview, then total general and special fund revenue funds, reduce the variance of 65.71 million dollars up top. And then, when we take a look at the overall adjustment in appropriations, we're still shy 17.89. So I take it that there was not a consistent formula that was utilized to be able to reduce all general fund appropriations outside of the retiree benefits and the healthcare benefits? Is that correct?
Well, the findings that we saw was that only general fund appropriations were reduced. And so, there was somewhat of a pro-rata share, for the most part. And I say for the most part because if you look through the tables 3.2 to 3.6, you'll notice that there are certain agencies that received a, I think there was one that was lower, it was like a 6.9% decrease, and then there were some that was 32%. There was another one that was 22%. But for the most part, the general fund reductions were across the board, pro-rata, 8.66%.
And that's why I'm asking the question, where is the variance of 17.89? And I was providing a somewhat leading response, that it really is reflective of non-reduction in general fund appropriations for the retiree agencies, and then obviously the debt service that this government has.
Yes.
So that's really where the variance originates from, in terms of conducting all the analysis. Because if they went with a consistent formula for all general fund appropriations, then it should reflect the 65.71 figure up top.
I, from my understanding, and this is an assumption because there isn't anything documented in the plan that says it, but the 47.82 is reflective of the BBMR memo, or BBMR circular 1802, which was a reduction of 47. So it's my assumption that that was what was reflected in the bill, they just put it into a bill format. And just to also, just to add, you'll notice that the variance percentages are all different. That's because these agencies, this table includes also special funds. So it shows you the reduction, not only in general fund to each agency or each category, but it also includes special funds. So that's why you'll notice that there are varying percentage reductions across the categories.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Senator Lee, you had a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Hernandez, for providing this detailed document for us. We're all looking at Page 3, Table 1, and I just, for those who may be viewing either on YouTube or on our channel, and don't have access to this document, if you could just highlight, under the executive branch, the variance in public safety agencies, how much of a cut would they receive if we passed this measure?
Based on the review, under Table 1, under executive branch agencies, we, OFB, we categorized this into public safety, public health, and other executive branch agencies. And to your question, public safety, the reduction based on the FRP Bill reflects an $8 million reduction, and that's reflective of a 6.63% decrease.
And public health?
Public health is a decrease of 5.93 million, which reflects a 5.43% decrease.
So 6.63% decrease in public safety, and a 5.43 decrease in public health. How about other executive branch agencies?
For the other executive branch agencies, the reduction of the total 130.18 million in that category was 3.82 million, reduction of 2.94%.
2.94. Thank you.
Senator Tom Eda.
I know that questions are being asked on Page, about Page 3, but my question was on Page 4, regarding Table 2. And I noticed that the Section 30 funds was not adjusted under the fiscal realignment bill. Why would that be, since the Section 30 affects those income taxes, right? You would expect that that would be adjusted downward.
Yeah, so this is my assumption, because there's nothing documented to explain it. But Section 30 funds that are reflected in the FY 18 budget were, is basically what was supposed to have been received September of 2017 for the next fiscal year. And so if there's going to be any adjustment to that number, it would be reflected on the FY 19 budget side.
Oh, okay, all right. On Page 3, it shows there the appropriations overview, that the, of course, for public safety, there was a downward adjustment of 6.6% for public safety, 5.5% reduction for public health, and for other executive branch agencies, it was a decrease by 2.94%. But when you take a look at the further analysis of the other executive branches, the reductions were, I just don't understand how we can, I didn't get a chance to look through all of it, but just in quickly looking, it looks like a lot of the agencies got reduced by 8%, 15%. So how do we come up with a 2.9%? End up with a 2.9% reduction?
Well, I can't speak to the intent of why that, you know, the percentage was disproportionate to the others. But what I would say, just not being able to look at everything in terms of aggregating what wasn't cut, I do note that there are some appropriations made to the Department of Administration from the general fund that were not reduced. And these include your residential treatment fund appropriation, appropriations for audits. There's also the government claims fund that wasn't reduced, support of child in custody appropriation, and so forth. And what could have also been driving this percent down was that maybe there's a larger percent of special funds that are to these agencies that would have driven down that percentage, simply because, like, as for example, DPW is nearly fully funded by special funds, and because special funds were not reduced, then you'll see that there's a disproportionate, it's showing that it's lower as a percentage. I can't speak to the intent of the distribution, but that's what it appears to be based on the FRP Bill.
Okay, it's fine, thank you.
Any other questions, or can Mr. Hernandez continue? Okay. I think he says that's about, any other questions you have on any of the additional pages? Senator Eda?
Well, I don't know if it shows here in the analysis provided by OFB, but when I was looking at the, what was submitted by the Governor's Office, for example, for the Guam Solid Waste Authority, I'm just trying to reconcile what they did, was they, the original budget bill showed an appropriation of $7 million, and then we had to introduce a new law that actually appropriated the remaining 12 million that was out.
Senator Nelson, and then Senator Uggins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to clarify, so that it's very clear, that even with this fiscal realignment plan, they're still proposing the 2% BPT increase? Do they go hand in hand?
I believe this was presented because when we were talking the BPT link last week, some members, including myself, insisted that FRP was required.
Yes.
And some of us needed it to add to the things that we're going to be thinking about in our deliberations. So it was provided to us, though in their cover letter, they insisted it's not necessary, FRP was not necessary because the 3% deficiency was not in the quarter, it was in the month of January, but they provided it anyway. So it isn't, it's just given to us as some ideas about, for us to consider as we're thinking about 245.
Okay.
But 245 is still on the table with us, is really the only thing on the agenda for today.
Right, so just so the public understands, last night, we received a fiscal realignment plan from the executive branch, with a cover letter stating that in December, there was a 1.65% decrease, kind of saying that perhaps since in January, this is the end of the quarter, we're still keeping in accordance with the law. But I want to say that we need to start looking forward, because we already know the impending impact, you know? We need to start moving forward and forward, thinking we can't pretend like, just because it's 1.65 in December, it's not going to be any worse in January, when clearly we see that it will be, even though we're working with a moving target. And, you know, just to point out, I want to say that in this fiscal realignment plan, there's still going to be an impact if we increase BPT, there's still going to be a pro-rata share across the government. It's still going to impact our public safety, which is the highest, which is the highest denominator here, as far as the executive branch piece, and it's really a concern to me. And then also, they're only accounting for that $47 million shortfall, which was in the SES, everyone agreed at the table that it was going to be about 67, 68 million dollars shortfall. So I don't think this is very transparent, but I know that my colleagues, a lot of us have a lot of solutions I want to bring to the table, and not just a Band-Aid solution. So I hope that we can all, speaking with each and every one of you, a lot of you have other ideas, I have some ideas, and I hope that we can somehow formulate this into one bill, and pass this bill that the legislature proposes, that may not have such a significant impact on the entire island of Guam, for things that are not even clear to, or forthcoming from the executive branch. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Senator, that's correct. The FRP, the fiscal realignment plan is just here for our consideration, but on the table today is just 245, and we will get back to that as soon as we conclude the presentation by OFB. If anybody has any further questions, by Speaker.
Thank you, thank you, Speaker, and OFB, and Mr. Hernandez, for this analysis, it's very helpful. Could you just clarify, and I know that you said in your caveats, that they estimated based on, we're not, sorry, they were not based on OFB's baseline revenue tracking for income taxes, which I think, which the prior speaker just mentioned, you had estimated 68 million loss of income taxes, and they're reducing the revenues by 65.71. So there's a little bit of a difference there from what we've been discussing. And then, when they had given us, BBMR had given us their attachment in relation to Bill 245, they had also estimated to cut, you know, by BBMR circular, 15.7 million for most of the executive branch agencies, and then 22 million for DOE, judiciary, OPA, and legislature. So that was a total of 37 million. But these numbers have also changed from, so from 15.7 million, now we're looking at 17.75 million. And maybe they're not the same agencies, but they had also proposed a 22 million, and am I reading this right now, they're proposing a 47.82 reduction in appropriations? So a total of, oh, no. What is the total of, gee do, what would be the number equivalent to their 22 million on the old attachment?
Okay, let me address the first question related to the...
Or I guess the total, I'm sorry, yeah, the total that they had proposed before is 37.7, and now they're proposing 47.82. What changed? What's the difference?
Okay, if I could, I'll address the first question regarding the revenue difference. So if you turn to Page 4, under Table 2, it shows the breakdown of where the 65.71 million came from. And so, if you notice on Table 2, you'll notice under total income tax revenue, you'll see that the 67.05 million was the amount that was estimated at the February 13th SES meeting. And you'll notice down at the bottom, it says 2% reserve, which is a requirement under 22436, Title 5. And so, because there's a reduction in the income taxes, there's a commensurate reduction in what we have to reserve, and so the difference between that is 65.7 million. So that's why it's a slight difference, because taking into consideration the 2%.
So they still are accounting for 68 million? All right, thank you.
And then, to your second question, I think you're referring to the attachment during the public hearing. We didn't do a comparative of that, but from what I understand is, and this is the assumption that we've made, is that the 47.8 million was related to the BBMR circular 1802 that mentioned they were going to reduce agency general fund appropriations by the 47.8 million. You know, I can't make the assumption that there's the reasons why they, it's still at 47.8, but I know that the 15.7 that was in that attachment, I'm pretty certain that that's included in the 47, and then in addition to the, I think it was 22 million from the Department of Education, the courts, the legislature, and OPA, and I think the AG's office as well. So that would be, I'm assuming that's inclusive of the 47, it's in here already. We don't have a comparative, you know, what's the 22 versus what's in here, but if you do go through the different tables, 3.2 to 3.6, you can pick out each agency to see the difference, and then we can probably add it up for you, if that's what you'd like.
And we had a per-agency analysis before, for the 37.7 million that they were estimating to cut? No, I don't think so, right?
Yeah, the 15.7, that one is, I'm not, I'm unable to kind of pull that out of the 47 at this point, because that would require us to go through their, the plans that were submitted by each agency, and then we can pull out each one, so.
It was my understanding that they had proposed to cut 37.7 instead of 48 million, despite their circulars, because some of those agencies responded that they could not cut. But is it then for us to guess that the 47.82 now being proposed is just a change in direction, I guess, that they are now agreeing that those agencies can be cut, or should be cut?
If you want, you can have, we can have them in here to explain that. I'm just saying, the whole FRP really doesn't need to be passed by this body. All the cuts that they're proposing, they could do on their own. As, when you went to the SES meeting, you heard, I guess, the public auditors say, "Well, by law, you can't reduce my allotment," but the response that the auditor got was, "Yes, I realize that statutorily, I cannot reduce your allotment, but if I don't have the cash, I can't give you your allotment." So with their cash control measures that they've been doing over the last several years, they could implement all of these things with, all these savings without, without a bill passing here, amending all these sections in the law. Because I don't think we really want to go and reduce public safety by the 8 million that they're proposing, because they may need it. And so it just, they should be able to make the determination where they're going to take the cash. And they've even proposed taking money from the hospital, which I thought was in dire streets. So they were just trying to find areas that people agree that they were going to, willing to take a cut, but I don't think we need to hold them to it by introducing this as a separate bill, having a hearing and passing it. They can control that. We just need to try to figure out how to be able to assist in providing some stop-gab measure to provide them with assistance to tide us over, until all of the other suggestions, the increased limited gaming tax, the sales tax, the online tax, the bed and breakfast tax, the increase in the property tax, whatever we're going to do, we need some time to get those pieces of legislation through. And if we can go back to 245, I have a compromise, which I'm hoping will be acceptable, and I think, meeting everybody halfway.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I understand that it is within the control of the executive branch to, without our action today, cut agencies, or cut the cash that is going to them, and that they've always had that power. They've had the power of transferring from between appropriations that we've given them. It's a limited power, but they do have that power, and they've had these powers all along. But I think it is also within our policymaking responsibilities that we have an idea, so I'm grateful that they gave us in writing the idea of where they are going to cut, because we give them, by our policy direction and budget bills, where we thought they should spend. And I think we should have a hand in at least knowing if they intend to spend, or cut, rather, and not spend in certain places, that we should know that. And we have to answer to the public for those things. So I don't think it's something to easily dismiss, I think, because by acquiescence, we're responsible, right? And if we've allowed them, despite the authority we've given them, for example, to fund the hospital, and they chose not to, you know, we need to do something to change those priorities. And so, that's why I think this document is very helpful, to see the priorities of the administration right now. And when we're setting the goal in any kind of Bill 245 or compromise that we intend to pass, you know, the goal's going to be, are we going, is our goal going to be to make up the 17 million only, you know, or do we need to make up more, or are we going to need to make up less, because we're going to require them to cut more? I mean, that's really the crux of the matter, right, is how much cuts are we going to accept or demand, and acquiesce to, you know, non-funding of which parts of our government? And that drives, because we're looking at taxes, right? And so I just think that's why it's so very important. If we are going to raise a tax, then even considering raising a tax, we need to be very clear to the public that these cuts will be made, that we have considered where they were going to be made, and that it was not done, you know, blindly, or that, that's just, I just feel that's our responsibility, Mr. Speaker.
Oh, no, it definitely is, and we can have those hearings on going through their proposed cuts, and address that, and I'm sure some of you with oversight are going to have a few things to say about that. I'm sure the Education Chair is going to have some issues with the 7.97 decrease in the amount going to education as compared to other, so we can have those, we can have those hearings, and we shall, we will. But before us today, it's just what are we going to do with 245? This was provided to us because there was a request by a number of us that an FRP be provided before we would consider 245. And so it's now provided to us, and now the question... And so it's now provided to us and now the question is, what are we going to do? Yes?
Just have another question for OFB. On the fiscal realignment plan that they submitted, I know your analysis did not include analysis of their revenue enhancements, their list. They gave us this list and they had given us a list at the, the SES meeting, BBMR had given us the list. And, um, I want to thank you again for the analysis that, that you did do for the earlier SES meeting. You did an analysis on the revenue enhancements that was very, very helpful for all of us. And I'm just wondering if there's been any analysis on any other of the ideas that has been put on the table?
Yeah, we're, we're currently, we're currently looking at some of the, the, um, revenue enhancements that were discussed at the last SES meeting. Uh, we're, 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 we're still trying to work with, uh, with BBMR in terms of getting the data behind some of the estimates that they presented at the SES meeting. Uh, but we're, we also have, you know, uh, enough data for, to look at some of the other ones that, uh, they had proposed. Uh, so it's in, it's in, it's in the works in terms of, uh, doing another report or addendum to the report to reflect, you know, the, the revenue enhancements related to FY18 versus what it would look like for the next fiscal year.
Yes, well, Mr. Speaker, because they, they proposed 245 as a, um, in their original proposal, it's for a two-year period. And I, and I know that you're, you know, there's been discussion about, um, you know, giving them a shorter period, but still, I think, yeah, the, the other revenue enhancements listed here and the others that have actually been put on the table by other members of the legislature, to me, the more of those that we can address, if we decide to raise a BPT, the better. Because those give us a long-term solution and not this mentality of, "Let's just fix it for the next 45 days" or, you know, "Six months" or even a year. Even two years to me is too short for a magnitude, a problem of this magnitude. And so I'm just hoping to get as many of these revenue enhancements on the table and, and, and part of a package that, uh, you know, the community might be able to, to, you know, feel better about. And, and for us also because, yeah, I don't think anybody wants really to raise a GRT. But, uh, if we can propose all, you know, that we've, or show them that we've analyzed all the suggestions that have been made and, and are accepting, a lot of these are very good recommendations, I think. I think you, you also agree. And so I just think that we should put those on the table and also discuss those.
Yes, I think that's, that's very correct. But we also need some time to be able to analyze it because as many text messages I got to increase the property tax and BB, I mean, um, rev and tax did provide us an initial breakdown of how much money they thought we could raise if we increased it by the various percentages. Uh, OFB also suggested, "Do you just take the improvement or the improvement and the underlying, uh, real estate? Or do you put them together? Or do you separate them?" All of those have to be publicly heard, but that's going to take some time. And all we're trying to do right now is to stop the bleeding, stabilize the patient so that we can deal with what other operations are absolutely necessary. And so that's, that's, um, but I want to go through all of those and we will have hearings on every single one of those, uh, suggestions, even some as far-flung as, maybe I might not hear the casino bell, I'll send it to somebody else. But, uh, but just whatever, you know, um, we've got to address those. And so we need some, we need some time. And so I, I'd like to know if there's any further questions as it relates to this and whether or not we can get back to 245. I see it's Senator Uggins, Senator Lee, then Senator Ada.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Speaker. Obviously, we're not going to necessarily delve into some of the miscellaneous provisions. So I, I see the nature of the discussion. We're just focusing on the numerical figures. And I see it's very interesting, Mr. Speaker, that we already have certain provisions that have been mentioned repeatedly either at the SES, the Special Economic Service Discussion, your committee when you, when you called the Special Economic Service, when you called the public hearing on two different measures inclusive of bill 245 that is presently before us. But right now, we have provisions in law that were mentioned a few times. One is outright travel restriction. There's a provision in the public law, the budget law, that restricts travel unless in fact it's necessary. There's also another provision with regards to allowing the transfer of personnel on an interim basis for fiscal year 18, recognizably. And then there's a additional provision with a restriction on government vehicle use. Those three aspects, Mr. Speaker, are already in the budget. My question is, are we enforcing these provisions? Because these, by nature of enforcement, would result in cost savings and cost reduction. And they're already public law. So what I'm saying is that in this particular case, yes, there's some mechanisms already authorized in law to be able to ensure that we continue to contain costs and that we reduce costs further. In addition to that, Mr. Speaker, if in fact we are in a financial crunch, which we know that we need to identify revenues, whether it's revenue enhancement, whatever option is ultimately decided by this body. But we have before us, and I appreciate, you know, the governor's been genuine in, in advocating for the 2%. He's been direct and he's, he's been insistent on the 2% increase. That's where he and I deviate. That's where we go separate ways. Because I don't believe this community should absorb a tax increase at this point in time. But, Mr. Speaker, we're looking at a proposal that reduces all general fund appropriations based on what was previously discussed, inclusive of the Guam Police Department being reduced by $2.5 million, which was highlighted during the discussions. Guam Fire Department to be reduced by $2.7 million. Department of Corrections by $2 million. And then we look at some of the other agencies such as education significantly reduced. And I, I say that, I bring that up because there's another component of this entire equation, Mr. Speaker, and that's one of the reasons why I asked specifically, and the request was this verbatim, "For any and all government of Guam special funds and their balances inclusive of autonomous government of Guam agencies." And you know, Mr. Speaker, we know that there are restrictions with certain autonomous agencies. So for this administration to make a general statement that Senator Uggins, verbatim, has requested that administration officials provide cash balances for autonomous agency accounts indicating his desire to raid the agencies to make up the shortfall, it's an outright lie. Why don't we walk this through? There are special funds, whether you want to call it the Territory Education Facilities Fund, whether you want to call it the Tourist Attraction Fund, whether you want to make reference to the Healthy Futures Fund, whether you want to make reference to, and with all due respect to the Chairman of Tourism, the hard bonds balance that has been sitting in an account, cash, $11 million plus, if I'm not mistaken, for the last three years because we're still formulating a decision as to how we are going to mitigate flooding in the Tuamun area. So, Mr. Speaker, there are options out there. It's enforcing the law, the travel restriction, absolutely no travel with the exception of the governor, the lieutenant governor, and perhaps the, the judges, whatever. Ultimately, there's a law that already restricts it. So just follow the law. Travel restriction, travel, transfer of personnel so that we don't have to hire additional personnel at this time because we are experiencing a cash crunch. Government vehicle restriction that would save on gas, especially in light of the cost of gas at this point in time. And then there's another component, and I say again, with special funds. And there is a caveat when I'm making reference to special funds. Because any special funds at this point in time that is being applied towards education, public safety and healthcare, they should be safeguarded. But the application of special funds anywhere outside of, of that, those three priority areas, in my opinion, should receive a corresponding reduction to what was provided here. So that, that those funds can be utilized to help augment and support the operations of this government. That's what I'm talking about, Mr. Speaker. Whether it's $5 million, I'm just throwing out a figure, or whatever that figure may be, it would help this government transition and operate moving forward, at least for the balance of this fiscal year. So, Mr. Speaker, I wanted to clarify that, but there are already provisions in the budget for this fiscal year that should tighten the belt in terms of government of Guam, general fund expenditures, and we need to be able to enforce that. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Senator Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I, one more question for Mr. Hernandez. In the governor's letter to us, um, as he submitted his fiscal realignment plan on the second page, he asserts, "Based on the consolidated revenue expenditure report, the CRER that was transmitted to the legislature on January 2nd for the first quarter of fiscal year 2018, the projected general fund shortfall was approximately 13.9 million or approximately 1.65% less than the fiscal year 2018 adopted general fund revenue levels. Because the actual revenues were 1.65 less than projected and not 3% or more, a fiscal realignment plan was not required to be submitted." So here, the governor is asserting that the fiscal realignment plan is not mandated because the 3% trigger has not been met. And I just wanted to know, um, if OFB contends with that assertion?
Let me answer that. Yes, the law does state that at the quarter, if the, if there's a 3% deficiency, the, the FRP is, is, is required. That was for January 22nd, for the month of December, the quarter, the end of the month of December. Senator Nelson was correct. We saw in the CRER that was given to us on February the 20th for the month of July, that we're down, I mean, yeah, I mean, for the month of January, that we're down 4% and 3%. We really don't need to wait until the end of the quarter to say that we're short. Let's start addressing it now. And so though it wasn't required earlier, we can see the writing on the wall that we're heading downhill. It's not in a, we're not unfortunately in a four-man bobsled, we're in a skeleton going down the hill. Let's, let's, let's address it right now. And so, um, yes, they provided it to us and they split hairs and said it wasn't necessary in December. It might be necessary at the end of this, then this next quarter, but do we really need to wait until then? Let's, we're starting to address it. We thank them for having submitted it to us. We will take it into consideration as something that's going to be heard over the next several months. Because all of you with oversight probably should call your departments in to find out whether or not they're complying with what Senator Uggins is suggesting to see their savings that could be provided that wouldn't be necessary. But that's, each one of us has, has that, that authority and that responsibility with, with oversight over our various departments of whether or not we're going to, um, address those issues. Okay?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. And I also want to thank the administration for providing that even though they said that it's not required to be submitted, they did submit it to us yesterday. And it at least gives us a framework to start looking at and, and seeing what moves we want to take going forward. This is my...
Thank you. Senator Ada, I believe you had another question?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. First of all, I just want to make sure as, as I, as I try to, to follow, to walk this through in my mind, um, we've, we've, um, well, from the OFB analysis, um, we've concluded that the, um, projected revenue shortfall is, is about 60, 65, 66 million dollars, correct? And the administration has submitted a fiscal realignment plan that has identified 47.8 million in expenditure reductions, um, which means then that there's still a shortfall of about $20 million to sustain the, basically the real lean government, uh, from this point to the end of the fiscal year. And so I guess my question would be, um, will the 2% GRT increase, uh, let's say over the next 90 days, generate sufficient revenue to sustain what is left of the, um, the lean operations that, that GovGuam is going to be undertaking? Or is that going to take us way over the mark and that maybe we only need a 1% GRT increase? Because we're just trying to backfill a void of $20 million to sustain what is, what is left of this lean government that we're trying to achieve, correct?
I think in the past, the number has always been with each percent increase, there is a belief that we can generate $60 million in the year in, in BPT. Divide that by 12, it's an increase of about 5, 5 million a year. With a 2%, it's twice that. So however much we need, it, we can, we can provide that, that, that amount. It'll cover.
So, so given...
And that the 2% under the 2, under 245, .75 was also to go to the hospital and .25 was to go to GMH, so... For general operations, the 1% over the next five or six months should, should cover that at $5 million a month. Go ahead, here's some real numbers.
Yeah, so, so OFB, we issued the revenue enhancement report on, uh, February 13th and it provided the options relative to increasing, uh, BPT by .25, .50, .75, 1, 1 and 1/2 and 2%. We, the assumption was that April 1st, uh, implementation date. But just to your question regarding, uh, how much would be, with, how much is estimated to increase if we were to do 1% or 2%? At 1%, based on the report, uh, it would raise 24.63 million from implementation date April to end of September. And at 2%, it would raise, um, 49.27 million between April and September.
So is, is 2% going to be overshooting how much? Basically, we need to take us to the end of this fiscal year, uh, an additional 20, to generate additional $20 million, correct?
What is being requested in 245 is the 1% is going to go to general fund. .75 will go to the hospital and .25 will go to education for its facilities. So there, that's the, that's the addition. If you, if you include or don't include the hospital and GMH in their, um, education and GMH in the, in their facilities funds that are going to be funded by the additional The 1% is 24 million by the end of the fiscal year. With implementation on April the 1st.
So, uh, Mr. Chair, if we just, how much do we need monthly? How much do we need to keep the government afloat monthly?
Cause if we divided... General fund, the government or DOE and GMH? Because those are two additional things.
The general fund.
The general fund, as I understand it, payroll is 15 every two weeks.
15 million every two weeks.
At least that's the number that I recall.
Mr. Chairman, put information. I believe the number was, uh, 7 million per month, but that's keeping in mind with the, with special caveat that there are, there are still cash flow issues to address. So being specific to that amount where the shortfall is, isn't going to address vendor payables and other, other liabilities that the government have, has that comes at different times and when other revenue comes in. Um, so it, it is important to consider that while the $7 million monthly shortfall is, seems like it's not difficult to get to, there is going to have to be wiggle room. like it's not difficult to get to, there is going to have to be wiggle room to allow for adequate cash management so that things are being paid timely.
Did that help, Senator, or did that confuse you any more?
Confused.
Senator Torres.
Fernando.
Just to carry on on that thought, I think what is getting lost here is, this started out as a bill with the focus was primarily on GMH and how to save GMH from falling off the cliff. But then, it morphed into a greater picture, which was a fiscal crisis for the government as a whole. And then, 245 addresses two things, as you pointed out. Mr. Speaker, 1% is really to address a shortfall in cash as a result of the tax, the Trump tax reform. And then, the other 1% is to take care of DOE and GMH's pressing needs for modernization and capital improvement. But, you know, what is coming to light here as we're looking at this, because we're now getting a little muddled in a fiscal realignment plan and Bill 245, but they do go hand in hand to some respects. Not that they need to be addressed at the same time, but Bill 245 is really dealing with, first and foremost, do we want a tax increase? But that tax increase of 2% is bifurcated, because 1% is for addressing a fiscal crisis of the government, and the other 1% is a dedicated funding source. So we really, we really can't mix the two. We have to think of it in that regard, that 1% is to stop the bleeding and to take, you know, to avert a shutdown of services or loss of employment. And the other 1% is for GB, is for the hospital and DOE. But I think what we have to come to terms with as we look at the two is, even assuming that we are on board with 245, and that we do get an increase in the tax rates that infuses us with revenues, there still is a need for government reduction, a reduction in expenses. So whichever way you look at it, whether you want to address one now and one immediately after, both need to be addressed. And I think the confusion that a lot of people have is that this 50% increase is going to be the cure-all. But actually, the 50% increase isn't the cure-all, because half of it is a dedicated source for, specifically for DOE and GMH. And the other half of it is to fill in the revenue shortfall that the government is expecting. So I think as a body, we really need to look at the fact that we're, while GMH has been the poster child for this whole effort, the greater picture is the fiscal crisis of this government. And the solution to the fiscal crisis is revenue enhancement and it's a decrease in government expenses and expenditures of government. So we can't, we can't say that, you know, we can't look at them separately necessarily, but we also can't be shortsighted and say that we can look at one later and we can just look at 245 now. Because 245 regardless will not save this government, regardless, it won't save this government. There simply isn't enough money to fill in the gaps that we have right now and the shortages as a result of whether it's wholly the federal government's fault, which a lot of us have to come to grips and understand that that is absolutely not the case. Truly, if we've had a fiscal shortage and a cash shortage for months, this is not the federal government's doing entirely. And that's what we have to come to grips with. So I think we need to get back to the discussion of 245, because whether we agree with a fiscal realignment bill and the parameters of that, that's for another day. But I think the first disposition is 245. Do we want a tax increase? Knowing that that tax increase, whether it's 1% or 2%, whatever you do, it's not going to be enough. That's not the cure-all. And, you know, that's really the task for this body. One or the other isn't the cure-all. Both are the solutions, but to what extent are we going to agree that it is a reasonable solution? And at this point, neither are reasonable. We understand that, neither of them is reasonable. They're not the cure-all. But there begins the balance, the balancing act.
Speaker Cruz.
The retiring speaker is very correct, Madam Speaker, that both of them have to be taken into consideration. But not only both of them have to be taken into consideration, but everything else that has been discussed this morning. Is it possible to do more reorganization? Is it possible for other tax enhancements, I mean, revenue enhancements to be proposed and acted upon? And I think what we need is some time. And that's why the other day, I proposed an amendment where I would put our feet to the fire by having a 60-day period within which to implement the tax and force us all to not only look at the fiscal realignment plan, but to look at every tax proposal, that every revenue enhancement plan that everybody has suggested. And also, the reorganization that some of the members have been talking about. But we need some time. And we met yesterday with the governor about extending it, that my 60 days was unreasonably short. In an attempt to try to find a happy medium, I'm going to try an amendment, since 245 is still on the floor, I'm going to try to do an amendment where I know that they wanted additional time. If I make the end period June 30th, and I make the start period May the 1st, I mean, March the 15th, can I get more than seven votes that I got for the 60 last time? I'm just trying to find us some time within which we can sit down and pound out all those other revenue enhancements, all the savings that we think we can get. And so, what I'm circulating is an amendment to Section 3 of 245, where I reduce it from 6 to 5. And I have a start date March the 15th, and I end June the 30th. I could not take it to March the 1st. I know the other, last week, members were insisting that we should start, the start date should be March the 1st. That's day after tomorrow, ma'am. And as we know, that was mentioned to us in one business, they have 30,000 items that they're going to have to go through and change prices on. Thankfully, all you have to do is change the tag on the front, but there are some companies where they would have to change the sales price on every single item, you know, in the store that they're going to have to run through to put the additional tax increase. So I'm hoping that this compromise, March the 15th to June the 30th, I'm increasing the period from 60 days to 115, I'm hoping that's a little more palatable to the members in this body and hopefully the administration, that I'm trying to, I'm trying to find a happy medium. I'm not proposing the full 2%, I'm making it 1. I'm not doing a two-year, I'm not doing a one-year, I'm just wanting 115 days in which all 15 of us, plus every member of the governor's fiscal team, sits down and pound out what other, what replacement can we have to fund GMH long-term? Is it going to be an increase in the gaming tax? Is it going to be an increase in the healthy futures fund? Is it going to be an increase in the sin tax? But if we have 115 days, we'll be able to get that legislation out. For DOE, if we want to increase the territorial education fund on property tax, we're going to have to make a policy decision here. Is it just the underlying real estate? Or is it the real estate plus the improvement on top of the real estate? Is it one or the other? Is it both? Do we increase one and how much? I know that some of you saw both REVEN Tax and OFB have done some analysis on how much would be increased if you changed certain percentages. And so, we'll have time to be able to do that. And we'll, well, that may be enough to fund the facilities improvement fund for DOE. But we need some time. And so, this is my last effort. I know last week I said I give up, but I don't give up very easily. Most of you know I'm very persistent. So I'm trying again to ask whether or not this body would consider this amendment, increasing the implementation date to 115 days at 1% and devoting ourselves, as put into Section B, during the effective, during that period, "The legislature and the executive branch shall collaborate to explore and identify any and all potential revenue streams, financial sources or grants to address the tax base erosion, including but not limited to federal government assistance or private financial lending sources." So that's my swan.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. On the Speaker's Amendment, Senator Rodriguez.
Alfredo, thank you very much, Vice Speaker. Vice Speaker, on this amendment, I know that the Speaker, and I commend him for really, for doing everything he could to get us to where we need to be. And I want to say, I don't, I don't want to dilute the urgency of the situation, because I know how important and how critical we are. And I give credit also to the administration for being on top of this and for being here and for being very cooperative with us as well. However, anything we do today or tomorrow is not going to result in what it is we're trying to do. Because if we have an effective date of March 1st of any increase, the revenue that would be realized, won't be realized until the following month, April 20th. Please correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Hernandez. But, so, that's where we're at today. And listening to all the suggestions that have been put on the table, the governor has, in his fiscal realignment plan, has proposed several options. Other members of this body have proposed other options as well. We have Bill 230, that's also, that's also on the table as well for a dedicated revenue source for the hospital. And for me, I understand where the Speaker is saying, is that we start in two weeks, we give businesses, give the community more, enough time, or two weeks of a time to adjust. I understand where he's coming from. However, that two-week period and the consequences of doing what it is, whether it be a 1% or 2%, could be devastating for small business owners. I was a small business owner at one point myself, and a 1% could be very devastating. And so, you know, what I'm asking is that this body, look at all the other, look at all the options that have been put on the table, and use this two-week period to come out with a proposal that eight of us in here could agree on, and move that forward. Because nothing we do today is going to result in averting a payless payday in two weeks. Because any increase we do in GRT does not, does not become, does not, is not realized until the following month. And so, that's something that I wish to be able to put on the floor, on the table here as we consider the Speaker's Amendment. Thank you, Madam Chair.
On the Speaker's Amendment, Senator Torres.
Madam Speaker, I support the amendment, I support the concept of the amendment, but I believe that the implementation date might be an awkward application for businesses to have mid-month be at 1%, and then the remaining half of the month at a different percentage for BPT. So I would suggest that if we were to facilitate the transition for businesses, that this instead be moved to perhaps April 1st. Regardless, we're not going to, if the idea was to collect immediately at the beginning of the month, BPTs are collected more towards the end of the month, or remittance are more towards the end of the month, so that beginning of the month mark is kind of an inaccurate reference. So I would suggest, you know, that we consider instead, for the facility's sake, moving it to a date that will affect the beginning of the month. It's hard to bifurcate it. I mean, it's enough that we're adding more.
I believe we had, there was, all right. Is that an amendment?
I'm proposing that we consider maybe changing it instead to April 1 and ending, we can even end it in July, you know, just have it start out, but let it extend even further if need be, to July 31st, for example, just as a consideration and just for discussion purposes.
On the Speaker's Amendment, Senator Estevas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Gets to the point of the retiring speaker, if we were to look, looking at an April 1st start, and I do understand it's an awkward, it's an awkward start date, and, you know, all we can ask is that the business community be patient and work with us. An April 1 collection would, an April 1 start date would start looking at collections coming in at the end of May. Because for the month of April, the GRT collection won't, isn't due till May 20th. So we're not going to see the revenues for over a month and a half. So I wouldn't, I would caution against, if we're looking at, you know, something very temporary, just to stop the bleeding, I wouldn't recommend anything further out than what the proposed date is at March 15th. And, you know, the business community is flexible, and I believe they'll be able to adjust to this. And I hope that they'll work with us, because, you know, as a business owner, I understand how vital government is for businesses to function. And, you know, I've used this example before, if GovGuam workers are on a 32-hour work week and services are starting to get piled up, if I was a real estate investor, I can't wait over a month or more for a title to get processed, or I can't stand in line at REVEN Tax for 12 hours if I only have one day to do it, because time is money. So I would caution against any change in the date, because the government is just as vital to the business sector as it is for the private sector is vital to the public sector and government. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. On the Speaker's Amendment.
Madam Speaker, I'd like to propose an amendment to the amendment that...
All right, wait. Okay, Senator Torres, you're recognized. Yes.
I would like to propose an amendment to the amendment where the, on the first line, the date be changed from April 1, 2018, in effect until July 31, 2018. And the reason that I would do this is while we are so concerned about stopping the bleeding, we are affecting the business community with a 25% tax increase, assuming this amendment goes through. To have a one-day time period to react to a 25% tax increase, I think is just asking too much of people who are going to be burdened on top of the burden of having to survive very difficult economic times. So in the interest of the businesses, I would lobby that if we're going to affect them with a 25% increase, at least give them the respect and the leeway of a one-month transition period so that they can affect the prices of their goods if they need to, they can make some corresponding changes to their business operations, and also...
And also, April is also the time where their tax remit, their corporate tax remittances are due, and we don't know, you know, the unnecessary burden might be a little unreasonable to impose something on top of that at that time. So as a, as a person who understands the trials of running a business and thriving in a business, if we're going to put a 25% increase on their backs, give them, give them 30 days. One day is cruel, if anything. Thank you.
Senator Torres, your amendment is to amend the March 15 to April 1?
Yes, ma'am.
And the June 30 to July 31?
Yes, yes, Speaker.
All right, so on the Torres amendment to the amendment...
Madam Chair. Just a point of information.
Senator Estevas, what is your point of information?
It was stated that it is a one-day turnaround for the change, but just to correct, the amendment as it stands is 15 days, because it's a start date of March 15. So just to clarify the record, it's not a one day to change prices or to adjust, it's actually two weeks.
All right, on the Torres amendment to the amendment. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Senator Morrison, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I thank the author for moving this amendment. However, Madam Chair, I, you know, I was looking at this March 15 dateline, actually I was proposing in earlier discussions on March 1st timeline. However, since we're looking to move this back further, to allow businesses to prepare should this measure pass, Madam Chair, I'd like to amend the amendment to the amendment if it should go from April 1st to start April 1st, 2018, that at least allows the government within the fiscal year to work with any potential changes. So I would like to amend the amendment to the amendment to, if it should be April 1st, that that timeline should be September 30, 2018. That really gives, basically works through the fiscal year of helping to stabilize this government, and I hope my colleagues will support that if we were to move from April 1st, that we allow the government to work with, towards the fiscal year. That's my amendment to the amendment.
All right, Senator Morrison, we're not going to be able to entertain an amendment to the amendment to the amendment, so we're going to have to deal with the amendment to the amendment first.
So, Madam Chair, I could come back then? Oh, come back.
All right, thank you. And I'm going, I think, all right, so on Senator Torres's amendment to the amendment, changing the two dates, is there any other discussion? All right, so we're going to vote now on that amendment to the amendment. So her amendment is to change where it says March 15 to April 1, and where it says June 30 to July 31. All in favor of the Torres amendment? Please raise your hand. All right, motion fails. So on, we're on the Speaker's Amendment, as before you. On that amendment, is there any other discussion? Senator Morrison?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In light of some of the discussions that I'm learning that this, despite having this start date of March 15, we wouldn't be realizing these revenues, I guess according to OFB or previous speaker, by the next, following month. So in light of that, Madam Speaker, I, I'd like my colleagues to consider amending this measure to remain in effect until September 30, 2018, which is the close of the fiscal year.
Senator Morrison, is your amendment then to change the date June 30 to September 30?
September 30, 2018. And Madam Speaker, that's, that's really the close of the fiscal year. I understand the author was, in line, we should have some measures to, to adjust it or a transition to a sales tax, all these ideas. We're not really certain, you know, that could all happen within that timeframe, but, you know, I understand where the author is coming from, to tighten our belts and move a lot more quicker. We do have a bill introduced by one of our colleagues to address transitioning to a sales tax, but we don't know how that may even end up. But at least giving this whole fiscal year to the administration to work with this adjustment, I'm hoping my colleagues will support this amendment.
On the Morrison amendment to Speaker Cruz's amendment, Speaker Cruz, you're recognized.
Madam Chair, I hate to object, but I must. I stretched out as much as I could. Last week, I proposed the start date April the 1st. I couldn't get votes on April the 1st, so I compromised and I said, all right, March the 15th. My initial amendment last week was May the 30th or June the 1st, and I was willing to take it to June the 30th, and I even voted for the last amendment to take it to July the 31st, just to try to make sure that we keep everybody's feet to the fire. If we take it to the end of the fiscal year, I fear that there's not going to be, there's not going to be a sense of urgency that needs to be done. I was willing to take it from, from May the 30th to, to the 31st of July, but to take it all the way to October, September the 30th, that's just unreasonable. We've got to have as short a period as possible. And so I'd, I'm trying, but really seriously, that really is too long.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. On the Morrison amendment, Senator Torres, you're recognized.
Madam Speaker, I would also have to object to the amendment. I believe that, as I'd stated before, regardless of whether we do, we pass 245, there has to be a corresponding effort, an ongoing effort to cut government expenses. And so the urgency of that exercise has to be paramount. And if we now have a sunset that's shorter, it does force the issue. I concur with the mover of this amendment, it does force the issue, and it forces us to engage in that effort of cutting, cutting the government expenses. And I stand corrected also, corporate income taxes are due in March, so having a March 15 start date isn't as onerous. It is awkward to start midway in the, in the month, but if anything, I think that this is a good compromise. But I would, I would, I would just like to comment that I believe that, that having a short, a sunset period is critical to ensuring that the government doesn't lose focus and momentum in cutting expenses. Sisus masi.
Sisus masi. On the Morrison amendment to Speaker Cruz's amendment, is there any else, anyone else who would like to speak? All right, is there any objection to the Morrison amendment? There's an, there's an objection. So all in favor of the Morrison amendment to the amendment, which would be to change to June 30 to September 30? Please raise your hand. All in favor. Motion fails. On the Speaker Cruz amendment, is there anyone else who would like to speak? Senator Estevas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to voice my support for the Speaker's amendment. I think it's a good compromise. I think it's very important that, and to the retiring speaker, I'm of the absolute same mindset that we need to look at a multi-pronged solution. We both need to look at additional revenue sources, smart revenue sources in places that the economy can sustain those revenue streams to the government. But most importantly, I think reorganization and intelligent cuts are absolutely vital. This is a bad situation for the government of Guam, Madam Chair, but I think in this crisis, we can emerge and rise better than what we were. And I appreciate the compromise that the Speaker has made with this amendment in order to allow us the breathing room to do that, to prevent a situation in which we're rushing in any of those three categories, whether it be long-term revenue generation, whether it be rushing into cuts, or whether it be rushing into reorganization without, without the proper strategy or understanding of how it's going to affect operations of the government. So I'd like to thank all my colleagues, and I'd like to thank the Speaker for all the time and effort they've put into this, and I do support this amendment, Madam Chair.
All right, on Speaker Cruz's amendment, Senator Morrison, you're recognized.
Madam Chair, I do, I'm working on an amendment at this time. If I could ask for a minute recess.
Is that an amendment to Speaker Cruz's amendment? All right, is there anyone else who would like to speak while Senator Morrison works on that amendment? On Speaker Cruz's amendment? All right, so we'll take a five-minute, two-minute recess. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for your patience during that recess. And Senator Morrison, you have the floor and an amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair. I believe my amendments before our colleagues, I believe my amendments before our colleagues. And Madam Chair, if I could just read the amendment out on Section 3. The amendment reads, "The increased BPT rate of 5.5% shall be immediately effective and implemented March 15, 2018, following the enactment of the Act by Imago Laing Guahan, and it shall remain in effect until June 30, 2018. No less than 0.5% of the 1.5% BPT adjustment shall be allocated to the Guam Memorial Hospital. Immediately after such date, the tax rate levied shall revert to the amount implemented prior to the enactment of this act." So, Madam Chair, it is an increase up to 0.5. 0.5 is being dedicated in interim or during this timeframe, that is specified here in the amendment. And Madam Chair, you know, from the concerns raised from the hospital, knowing where their payables are, their financial situation, as noted by our, by previous speakers, it's really hard to separate the hospital from this challenge. And we've been talking about this for almost two years. It's still, it's still there, and I'm just wanting to see if my colleagues would support moving this adjustment up to 0.5 and dedicating it to our hospital. It is clear that it will revert back within this timeframe. I think many of us here are coming to some compromise, understanding that there is measures in place. As I pointed out, I have a colleague here that I appreciate that he introduced a measure to address or start the discussion with the sales tax. Who knows, that may happen sooner, but in the interim, I think we still need to address our hospital. I hope colleagues will support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Morrison. On the Morrison amendment to Speaker Cruz's amendment, is there any discussion? Is there any objection? All right, there's an objection, so all in favor of the Morrison amendment to Speaker Cruz's amendment, please raise your hand. Motion fails. On the Speaker Cruz amendment, is there any other discussion? Anyone who would like to be recognized? So on the Speaker Cruz amendment, is there any objection?